Good evening. We'll call the July eighteenth meeting of the Calcasieu Parish School Bo-- uh, School Boy, no.
School Boys. Are we voting on a superintendent tonight?
Assistant Superintendent. Get your hands-- Calcasieu Parish Police Jury's Board. Please silence your cell phones, and if you want to talk on anything on the agenda, please fill out a blue slip and bring it to the table up front. Uh, we will now have the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. That would be by me. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for this meeting, Heavenly Father. We ask for your guidance and your direction. Now, Father, it is our prayer that we would be as your son. We come not to be served, but to serve. The Lord, we ask that may the true Spirit of service rule our heart, guide our thoughts, and control our lives, so that one day we may be come through you, servants of all, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Matthew.
Mr. Ashar is out of town. Mr. Andrew Pahn?
Here.
Mr. Barris?
Here.
Mr. Burnley?
Here.
Mr. Clement?
Here.
Ms. Eason?
Here.
Mr. Guillory?
Here.
Mr. Hayes?
Here.
Mr. Landry?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Markentale?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Stelly?
Here.
And President Martin?
Here.
And you have a forum.
Thank you. One A appearance by Dr. Lacy Cavanaugh, Regional Medical Director for the Louisiana Department of Health. Please state your name and your department.
For the record, I'm having flashbacks.
Um, Dr. Lacy Cavanaugh, I'm the Office of Public Health Regional Medical Director for Region Five, which covers Calcasieu Parish for the Department of Health. Um, I do a lot more than just COVID, by the way. None of us really want to remember that, right? So I'm just here to tell y'all a little bit about some of what we do today and just to do an update. It's been a long time since, um, I've been here, and so we just thought it was a good opportunity. Um, first, I'm just gonna say, you know, people think of COVID when we think of public health, but we do a lot more than that. We also deal with things like sanitation, food safety. We actually provide direct clinical services out of the Health Unit, and one of the main things that we do is really work across organizations in the community to try to create programs, policies, and interventions that will improve the health of our community. Public health in Louisiana is really a joint effort between all of you and us. The parish is very generous and provides us with a lot of the staffing for the Health Unit as well as maintenance of the facility. And the state provides a lot of the administration, the oversight, some of the technical expertise, the lab, and some of our state staff that perform these functions. So really, one of the things that I think makes this region and this parish special is how well we all work together. I'll say I talk to my counterparts across the state all the time, and we don't see that everywhere in the state, so thankful to all of you. Also, y'all have probably heard me talk about our county health rankings before. You always hear that Louisiana is fiftieth in health, and this is where we get it from. This is a survey that's done every year. It's been done for many years. We're almost always at the bottom of the list. Thankfully, here in Region Five, we're a little better. We're normally kind of in the top third of the state on these measures. There are about twenty-five or thirty measures that go into these, but even though we're sort of at the top of the state, the state is fiftieth, so that's still not too great. I could go through every one of these measures and tell y'all how bad our health is, but y'all know it. Y'all have seen it on the media. Y'all have seen it everywhere. So, you know, we, we really are hopeful that we're gonna be able to do something to change that. So I'm also gonna talk just real briefly about some of the services that we offer at the Health Unit. I'm not gonna go through all of these slides in detail because I know that you all have them and can reference them, and I'm trying to be brief and save your time. But one of the services we offer is WIC. WIC, you've probably heard of it. It's a voucher. You come to the Health Unit, you get food loaded onto it. It's not just food. It's also consultation with a nutritionist, a lot of education, breastfeeding support, a lot of education about things like safe sleep and prevention of childhood injury. And our volumes here, this is our participation here at Calcasieu Parish Health Unit, and we have grown and grown and grown since, uh, 2022. You can see those participation numbers going up over time. We also infuse a good bit of money into the local economy. Here in Calcasieu Parish, with five months' worth of benefits, just so far this fiscal year, it's $471,000 that, um, have been loaded onto cards that are then spent in the community. In addition, we also provide reproductive health services at the Health Unit, so that's things like pregnancy testing, conception counseling, treatment, and, um, testing for STIs. We also do wellness exams, things like pap smears. We have a sliding scale. We never turn anybody away regardless of your ability to pay, so we're really a safety net of services. And we also offer telehealth now, so hopefully that'll take off. That's brand new. We also do immunizations, both offering those at the Health Unit, but we also administer the Community Vaccines for Children program, which is in your local pediatrician offices. It's how we manage to provide routine childhood immunizations at a reasonable cost, um, out in the community, so we work with the compliance side of that program. And brand new, one other really exciting thing that we've done here in the last year is we're now offer, able to offer private vaccines. If you remember, a long time ago, anybody could come to the Health Unit and get vaccinated, and then there was a period of time which we were not able to do that because of our funding. But now, our state has committed some dollars to that, and so we are able to vaccinate everybody who comes to us, and we're really excited about that. We have a whole host of other services. I'm not gonna talk about all these, but I just wanted to throw them up there so that if any of you have interest in these topics, please reach out. I'm happy to meet with any of you one-on-one, come back as a group to talk about some of these wonderful things that we're trying to do. And I'll also just put a few big wins that we've had. We definitely see a lot of people. We've done over ten thousand STI tests at the Health Unit in the past year, so that's a lot of STI testing, a lot of vaccines and pap smears, sixteen thousand death certificates. We just started doing screening for hepatitis C as well, which is exciting, um, to be able to screen for that. And then I'm also very proud of our team, who, for the first time ever, we actually went out and got some of our own local grants to fund work related to reduction of overdose deaths in this community, and we've made a lot of progress. I'm sure we'll talk about that at a later time, so. Also, one of our big wins is we did a restructuring of, um, an entity called the Partnership for a Healthier Southwest Louisiana, and I'd like to invite, um, Dr. Matwier. She's our partnership coordinator, um, who just started last year, to talk real briefly about some of the initiatives we're doing on the community front.
Hi. Like Dr. Cavanaugh said, I am Dr. Matwier, and I'm the coordinator for the Partnership for a Healthier Southwest Louisiana. This partnership was created back in 2012, and it was grant-funded by Blue Cross Blue Shield, and it is now funded by the police jury, so thank you. What we are is that we're a group of, um, local organizations and entities that really come together to utilize data to drive our public health interventions, and we also use data to determine whether the interventions we have in place, are they effective and are they making the impact that we want it to? So whenever Dr. Cavanaugh and I, last year, sat down and thought about what we really wanted the partnership to be, we sat down and looked at the data, and we determined ten priority health topics that we really wanted to focus on. And so that includes cardiovascular disease, medical emergency systems, youth education, infectious disease, opioids and substance use disorder, suicide and mental health, maternal and child health, cancer, nutrition, and healthcare access. Granted, there are very various amount of health-related topics that are important, but utilizing data, this is how we determined ten, um, that we really wanted to focus on. And so what we did was, um, we polled the partnership, and if they do work in this space, or if they have interest in this space, we developed work groups. So the asterisks represent the current work groups that we've created in the last year. Infectious disease, we just created back in May, but the others have been up and running since about, um, about August of last year. So I won't go into detail about each work group, but each work group has developed their own goals and objectives for the year, and I'm so proud to say that we have accomplished a lot in our work groups, and so just for example, the cardiovascular disease work group, we know that heart disease is the number one killer of all races and gender. And so we definitely determined that this was one of the health topics that we need to tackle here in our community, and so we, as a group, developed goals. One of them being to increase access to blood pressure screenings. Another is to increase AED community awareness through a PulsePoint AED app, which the app allows the community to, um, determine whether there are AEDs in the community. So and just in case you have a cardiac arrest, we know where the AED is located, um, and then also to increase community CPR and education. And I'll just touch on one more. I have them all listed here, but just in case you guys wanna look and see what other work groups are doing and their goals, but we do have a youth education work group. And as a community and as an organization, we pulled together all of the topics that we cover here in the community that we offer youth education in, and as you can see, it's a various list of topics. And our goal is to educate at least, um, five thousand five hundred students this school year. We have already developed an education catalog that we can give to schools, churches, any kind of outlet that has youth and they're needing youth education. So we developed a manual so that we can send to them, so they can have everything together, and we can show what organization offered what, um, course, education course. And then we're hosting several health fairs and parental education sessions. So I won't go into detail with the time, but if y'all are interested in more of what the partnership does, I'll be happy, like Dr. Cavanaugh, to come back and talk to you guys.
Mr. Guillory.
We'll quiz our remarks and we'll take questions.
I got Dr. Cavanaugh.
Okay. So, so two questions. I noticed you put up TB testing. Have you ever seen an increase in tuberculosis?
We have not. Well, we have done a lot of testing. We do have cases. It does seem to be hit and miss in this region. I would not say we've had like a significant substantial increase, um, at least not one that I would think would be statistically significant over the year. We have had quite a few cases this year, but we've had other years where we have similar number of cases. It kinda, because the number of cases is usually pretty small, it kinda ebbs and flows over time. So it is something we're tracking very closely.
And one, one other question. What about the, the, uh, Health Unit provide Narcan?
Yes, um, we do provide Narcan. Anybody can come to the Health Unit and receive Narcan. There are several places in the community that you can get Narcan, um, and our team does a lot of Narcan training, um, out in the community with various partners.
Thank you.
Mr. Guillory.
Yes. Uh, Doc, of course, you and I became very close in 2020. I got you on speed dial. But look, Doc, I, I noticed that as of, like, around the world, that one of the big things is opioids and mental health coming. Is that a big, big thing that we're seeing here now?
It is. Actually, in 2021 is when this region peaked in terms of the number of opioid deaths. Yeah, actually, it was on the next slide that we didn't do. Um, you can see this, this data actually comes from the coroner's office, and in 2021, we had, um, a hundred deaths just here in Calcasieu Parish from overdoses, and we've done a lot of work surrounding widespread distribution of Narcan. We developed an emergency department intervention called our BRIDGE program, which identifies people who go to the EG with substance use disorder and helps to connect them to care. Lots of education about opioids, and, I mean, you see, we've actually decreased our death rate here in this region, and I will say that's not something you see everywhere across the country or across the state, so I'm really proud of that work.
Thank you, Doc. Thank you, Ms. President.
Any other questions for Dr. Cavanaugh and Dr. Matwier? Thank you, ladies, for your presentation.
Oops, sorry.
Two A, adopting ordinance amending chapter twenty-six of the Code of Ordinance pertaining to community-type sewage system and drainage standards. We have a motion to defer for
Thirty days.
Thirty days. Motion by Mr. Quinn and a second by Mr. Markentale. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Two B, adopt a resolution approving a professional engineering contract for the LA twelve fifty-six, LA twenty-seven, LA one oh eight Walker Road intersection improvements projects. We have a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Andre Pahn. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Two C, adopt resolutions approving permanent
Move on.
Public facilities and servitude agreements for the East Calcasieu Parish Consolidated Waterworks project. We have a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Three A, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the county of the police jury dated June twentieth, twenty twenty-four. We have a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Burley. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Three B, adopt the resolution approving a cooperative endeavor agreement between the police jury and Sewage District Number Eleven of Wards three and eight for funding assistance related to environmental remediation services, general liability, and property insurance, and other operational expenses. We have a motion by Mr. Stelly and a second by Mr. Barris. Any discussion?
I have a couple of questions.
Uh.
Does this district have a millage?
Uh, yes, sir. It does. It's a small district. I don't know the rate. It, so it's, it's both millage, Mr. Markentale, and user fees, combination.
Do they have a board?
No, you, you serve as the board.
Well, did we just wake up one day and say we need one point two five million dollars?
No, so that, Mr. President, I, I can, there are two, two primary things that have happened that are large instances, and both of them had to do with, uh, discharges that have negatively affected the district. So it's not a over-time thing, but they just, two things hit at once, and we covered some of those details in the group sessions, but that, I don't want y'all thinking this is an every-year thing. It's very unfortunate, but they're two things within a six-month period. Well, one-year periods.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir, Mr. Landry.
But we could get reimbursed for some of those expenses. I mean, that, that's what was told to us here just a couple of weeks ago.
That is, we
I mean, that's what is expected. It just isn't gonna happen quick enough.
Yeah, we are hopeful, especially on the sewer pond spill, that that could be reimbursed, and it's just a matter of timing and, you know, a lot of hoops to go through, but we're hopeful. Yes, sir.
Mr. Quinn?
Can you answer my question? Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Three C, adopt the resolution approving a call, a call by Ward Two Fire Protection District Number One for an election to be held on Saturday, December seventh, twenty twenty-four, to levy and collect a tax of thirteen mil on all properties subject to taxation in, in the district for the purpose of maintaining and operating the district's fire protection facilities. We have a motion by Mr. Stelly and a second by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Three D?
Move on, three D.
Adopt the resolution approving a call by Ward Six Fire Protec-- Protection District Number One for an election to be held on Saturday, December seventh, twenty twenty-four, to renew, levy, and collect a special tax of twelve point two five mils for, on all properties subject to taxation in the district for the purpose of operating the fire district's fire protection facilities. We have a motion by Mr. Markentale and a second by Mr. Guillory. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Three E, adopt the resolution approving a call by Waterworks District Number Ten of Ward Seven for an election to be held on Saturday, December seventh, twenty twenty-four to renew, levy, and collect a tax of fifteen mils for the purpose of maintaining and operating the district's waterwork system, equipment, and facilities. We have a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Burley. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Four A, approve an application for a new liquor and beer permit.
Move on, four A.
Miss? Okay, we, Mr. Crane.
Did you already, you already, okay. Mr. President.
Wait, we gotta move.
Point of our, Mr. Brown, I think he's there to speak on four B.
Oh, I thought he was here to speak on the beer permit. Oh, okay. I was wondering, you jumped up. Yeah, I thought we were talking beer and you went to the podium.
I am gonna speak, but on the
I saw the school board.
We have a motion by Mayor Kayn. by Ms. Eason and a second by Mr. Burley. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Yeah, no, I didn't call for four B yet. I was still on four A. All right, four B, receive report regarding proposed amendments to chapter eleven of the Code of Ordinance pertaining to grass and weeds. Now, Mr. Crane.
Mr. Brown, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to confuse.
I thought you were talking on beer, man.
No, thank you. I appreciate it. Um, yeah, tonight, uh, actually, my, one of my managers was gonna present this, but unfortunately, she had a family help issue that she had to attend to, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna kinda muddle through this a little bit, so if you be patient with me, I appreciate it. So these are, uh, our ordinance amendments for chapter eleven for grass and weed, and really, it really pertains to our grass cutting fees. Uh, so really, none of the language in, in our ordinance is changing, other than the, the fee schedule itself. And I can tell you, let's see. It's been since nineteen eighty-five since we have had an amendment to these fees, so I think it is time that we do so, and I can tell you, it, it was brought to my attention by my staff, uh, early on in the year, that we were having issues with citizens saying, okay, we'll just let the, the parish cut the grass. Well, I can tell you, this is, this is not a service for people, for us to go out there and cut your grass. It is a penalty. It is a, it's a violation of the ordinance, and so we need to increase these fees so that it, it's a deterrent, uh, you know, and so that people will cut their grass. So anyway, that's what this overall, uh, request is, is to, is to really increase the fees, and you can see on this slide here, back in eighty-five, these were the fees that were set. Well, back then, they were pretty high, and so we were getting compliance with that back then. Of course, the administrative fee, you'll see here, it was only twenty-five dollars, and that, from our proposal, is going up significantly from there. The, we've presented this to our, our planning and zoning liaison group, and many of y'all are on this, on that group. It was decided early on that we, we have three classes. We have category A, B, and C, uh, class cuts, and it was decided early on that, as a group, that we wanted to keep those categories intact. So as a category A, that's the minimal, uh, you know, it's an urban suburban subdivision lot. Normally, uh, it's, you know, less than an acre. It's, uh, normally doesn't have a structure on it or any improvements. It's just a straight cut, and so that's what that particular category is. Category B is a somewhat larger lot. It may have improvements on it, such as a house or a mobile home or, or something like that. The grass is normally a little bit taller, um, and so that's what a category B, I just wanna give you an example. You can see the, the aerial photograph on the, on the right there that shows that. Category C, this is our highest, you know, tallest grass or highest category that we have. These are normally rural type lots. They're larger lots. There are many times where we have to cut these using a bush hog or something like that, so these are, these are much tougher, um, to cut. Again, uh, we haven't increased our fees since nineteen eighty-five. Obviously, inflation has increased over the years. Administrative costs have increased. Fuel costs have increased. Equipment, maintenance. Our vendors have increased their costs, and so this, again, this ordinance, what it does, it increases the fees. We did do a comparison with other communities, uh, across the state, and to see where we stood with these, and most of those communities are, are setting fees at a higher rate. And we also, in this particular ordinance, uh, we have a, a deterrent for repeat offenses that we'll, we'll charge. And so here's our fee schedule that we're proposing. Um, you can see on the left-hand side of this, the current maximum and current minimum fees, and then on the right side is the proposed maximum and minimum fees for each of those category lots, and of course, the administrative fee, uh, we're, we're significantly, uh, increasing that. The way we came up with these numbers, uh, we actually did a, a request for information for many of our local vendors who are in the grass cutting business, and that we've had cut the grass, and they gave us numbers based on the categories, and we took those numbers and we did an average of that. So it's not too low. It's not too high. It's about what they're charging to cut grass in our area. The penalty of this, uh, and that's what would be paid out to the contractor. When he goes out there and cuts the grass, he'll get that fee, but the penalty fee is really the administrative fee, the hundred and fifty dollars. And so again, if you see at the bottom of the slide right there, we, we indicate if you're a repeat violator, uh, then that fee will double. Uh, that base fee will double. And so that's really it, uh, in a nutshell. Um, we're, this is just an introductory, uh, tonight. Uh, you can take it under advisement, and then on August the twenty-second, we will be asking you to, uh, to approve this, uh, but I'll be glad to answer any questions at this hour.
Uh, Ms. Eason.
How are those fees collected, and, um, do they normally get paid, and if they don't get paid, do they go on the property as a lien or on the tax?
So what happens, um, we send a letter out. Letter gets sent out to the property owner. They have fifteen days to cut it. They don't cut it. Then we send, we send it, uh, the contractor out to cut the grass. They'll get it cut, and then we send an invoice to the property owner, and if they don't pay it within the certain timeframe that we give them, then we will file a lien on the property, and then that's how we get it back.
Mr. Landry?
Thank you, Ms. President. Tell me again about the repeat offender?
Repeat offender, if you're within a twelve-month period that we have to go back and cut your grass, that's doubled.
So the admin-- administrative fee will double?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I don't know. Honestly, I'd charge more than $150. I don't think that's enough. And I got some knotheds out there, I'm telling you, they keep not cutting the grass, and it's the same people.
Well, we hope that this will deter that, you know. It's going to, I mean, it's going to increase the fee quite a bit.
I got, I ain't kidding. By the time you get through with them in a year, they, you, they going to owe you about $4,000, $5,000, $6,000. I mean, but, you know, cut your grass, be responsible. People are tired of living next to that kind of stuff. I mean, they are. I don't blame them. They need to pay.
We hear it. That's why we're doing this.
Ms. Crane, is that the administration fee plus the other fees together? So like the $2.25 plus the $1.50?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Barris.
I think we'll wait, we won't wait 39 years to do it again. I think we'll put a note, we'll set a reminder for about a couple of years, hey, let's check and see how we're doing with this.
That's right.
And then, you know, but, you know, we're going to, we're going to beat the 40 years, I hope.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, sir. I see on the, actually, slide it said maximum and minimum. How do y'all determine which is which?
If it's under an acre, an acre or less, it gets the minimum, and then if it's over an acre, it's the max.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Andropov.
This was brought up in the liaison group, but it'll, to Mr. Barris's point about tracking how, how this works, and then come back in a year's time and with an update, and to Mr. Landry's point, maybe we'll look at increasing if, if it doesn't service it.
Oh, yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Okay, so can we get a motion to receive the report?
Motion. Second. We probably could vote on it tonight.
A motion by Mr. Markentale and a second by Mr. Andropov. Any other discussion? Any objection? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. 4C, authorize the director of Division of Planning and Development to notify the following property owners to show cause at a public hearing on September 5, 2024, as to why the structures on the property as stipulated should not be condemned. 1, 148 Moss Lane, Moss Bluff. 2, 212 Balboa Street, Lake Charles. 3, 1655 East Pine Meadows Drive, Moss Bluff. 4, 709 Tallow Road, Lake Charles. 5, 7493 Columbia Drive, Lake Charles. 6, 2212 Green Lawn Street, Lake Charles. 7, 6710 Cheval, Cheval Drive, Cheval Drive, LeBlu Settlement. 8, 7755 Georgia Street, Hayes. 9, 2851 Carswell Street, Sulfur. 10, 2292 Cluster Drive, Vinton. 11, 307 Phillips Road, Westlake. 12, 407 Neely Road, Westlake. 13, 720 John Stein Road, Westlake. 14, 2203 Alfred Drive, Alfred Road, Westlake. And 15, 3114 Broussard Road and Sulfur. We have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Gillery. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries.
Move on 5A.
5A, approve payment of all current invoices and advice, advice, and advice regarding budget to actual comparisons on general fund. We have a motion by Mr. Andropov and a second by Mr. Quinn. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. 5B, adopt the resolution on proposals for janitorial services for multiple parish properties. Staff recommends platinum cleaning and facilities services be awarded to contract. We have a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. 5C, action on bids for canine and feline food. Staff recommends the bid of Hills Pet Nutrition Sales, Inc.
215C.
Be accepted. We have a motion by Ms. Eason and a second by Mr. Burley. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. 5D, adopt the resolution on bids for thoroughfare road rehabilitation. Staff recommends the low bid of RE Height Construction Company in the amount of $6,910,888.09 be accepted. We have a motion by Mr. Markentale and a second by Mr. Stelly. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. 5E, adopt the resolution accepting the 3001 Industrial Avenue Hurricane Repair Project is substantially complete. We have a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Gillery. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries.
Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.